Let's resume our seats so the meeting can begin. We are now on the non-action items if the clerk would read.
Is discussion of a resolution to set a public hearing date of September 6, 2016, to consider the request of establishing a community improvement district CID for the Cyrus Hotel.
Mr. Deputy City Manager, if you would want to introduce the item.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd be glad to. Tonight, you'll be hearing from staff members as well as Cody Foster and his staff, for lack of a better word. They're going to, first of all, we'll introduce a concept to you regarding community improvement districts. For some of you, that's old hat, but for some of you, that is something that maybe you haven't done before. Brandon Kaufman, our finance director, will get up and talk about that. And then after Brandon's done, he's going to turn it over to Cody Foster and Seth and Lucky, I believe. And they'll also give a presentation about the genesis of this project and what all it entails.
Okay.
So if we go with your permission, I'll have Mr. Kaufman come up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
The mayor and members of the council tonight. I think the point of my presentation really is to give some background and a bit of education about community improvement in districts and kind of the process that you have to go through and their use already in the city of Topeka. Community improvement districts are a tool that's been allowed to be utilized by the state of Kansas since 2009. It's primarily an economic development tool that's been utilized in this community. And the way it works is generally you have a benefit district. And you, so you have a map, you draw a map with boundaries. And within that benefit district, you can put up to a 2% sales tax or you can utilize special assessments to help fund project improvements. We currently have two community improvement districts in the city of Topeka. One's at Holiday Square, that's at 29th and Topeka. That was a pay-as-you-go, meaning that no bonds were issued for that project. And then also a 1% sales tax. So if you buy something in that addition, in that area, you pay a 1% sales tax in addition to the state, local, and county-wide sales tax. In addition, we have the Crosswinds Development at 12th and Wanamaker, which they anchor tenant there is Academy Sports. That too was a 1% pay-as-you-go with no bonds issued. The governing body has established a policy. And that policy was established back in 2011. And I'm just going to review the objectives real quick. The objectives of that policy were projects would strengthen economic development in the community, would provide for employment opportunities, would enhance tourism, upgrade older real estate, or promote sustainability within the community. So the process for establishing a community improvement district. One, you have to receive a petition, which is really the first step. So the city has received a petition from Mr. Foster and his group, AIM Strategies, and that's a valid petition with 100% of the property owner signing that petition. Once a petition is received, the governing body would have to consider a resolution to set a public hearing. Once a public hearing is set, there are some steps that the city clerk has to go through for publication. Once that publication period is met, you can then conduct the public hearing. And after that, you can consider approval of a district and also consider approval of a development agreement. So tentatively, if you all can consider and approve the public hearing, setting a public hearing at next week's meeting on the 16th, that would set a public hearing for September 6th. And we would also, at that time, come back to you with a development agreement that had been negotiated with the primary developer. With that, I'm going to stand for any questions.
Are there questions, Mr. Kaufman, Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you. Why this process? Why would we want to do this process?
Councilmember Ortiz, this is the process that was requested by the developer to utilize a community improvement district. There's multiple economic development tools that cities utilize, such as TIFs or CIDs. CID has a little bit more flexibility than a TIF does. And the fact that you can do more private improvements with a CID than you can utilize with a TIF.
Is Colley Hill, is that a, what is that? Is that a TIF?
Councilmember Ortiz, that's a TIF district.
Okay, okay. That was a nightmare. And I don't want to get into that. Now, you said that you will come back to us with 100% of the business owners signing off on this petition. Is that correct?
Councilmember Ortiz, I think I said that 100, a petition was submitted to the city to move forward with a community improvement district. And that petition had 100% of the property owner within the district.
Does that include businesses then? Is property owners' business and home, or is it just business?
That would just be the property owners for that area. So from 912 to 924 South Kansas Avenue.
Okay, okay. And then, don't they get like a special rate or what am I trying to say here?
Councilmember Ortiz, the request that's been made is for a community improvement district. So within that, within the boundary of this area, a 1% sales tax increase would be tacked on. So if you went and you stayed at the Cyrus Hotel or you had dinner at the Holiday House, then you would pay an extra additional 1%.
That would go back in the...
Yes, the state collects that, they take 2% off the top. And then they send it to the city that generally also has an admin fee attached. And then after we receive certified expenses from a developer, then we reimburse that money to the developer.
And that, is that what you mean by pay-as-you-go?
That's what I mean by pay-as-you-go. So no, no bonds have been requested to be issued for this.
And is there any money that has to be, you know, and I guess I'm thinking of a TIF district because I know I've done a couple of TIF districts where they had to come up with a letter of recommendation, they had to come up with their own money. Is that anything like that in this, in this procedure?
Councilmember Ortiz, I think the primary developers here tonight, I'm sure, will be able to answer more questions about the amount of money that they're also putting into the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to touch on some of the topics there. The benefits of the city is that there's really no financial exposure to us. The only incremental 1% tax is charged by the property owner on his own properties. And so he's really the only, the only people at risk on this. And the reason that it's important in the conversation you've had is there are significant costs associated with redeveloping a downtown historic property in this manner. So this allows them to recover some of those costs that makes the deal more doable on their, on their behalf. But when we get into this, we're obviously looking to protect the city's interests and there's absolutely no risk to the city.
And I would, and I think also the current ones of Holiday Square and Crossroads are paying well. I mean, that's where actually, I think we saw in our budget materials, their income is exceeding what was planned. So that's an example where it is working. Councilman Ortiz.
And I can appreciate that, Jim. But I also hope that we would be fair across the city, where, you know, wherever. That's, that's what I look at. That's why I ask so many questions. I know some people are rolling their eyes at me and I don't care. That's, that's my, that's my ideal, is to make sure that we're fair across the city. Because before, I've sat on here 11 years and I've seen in the TIF districts where we weren't always fair. We gave this guy a pass, we made this guy come up with his own money. So I just want to make sure I get a clear understanding of that.
Other questions for Mr. Kaufman? Councilman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, for one thing, there's, there is 100% of the owners, but there's one owner, right?
That is correct.
Okay, which is fine. It's good, just so everybody knows. When we, we've got a lot of material in this application packet about the background in the application. I recall that when we did the TIF or the CID that Academy Sports is at now, it was a little bit complicated in the final deal, you know, the paperwork. And that was because, I think, as I recall, we were bringing in some businesses that had already been in Topeka. There were multiple businesses and we wanted to protect the cities continuing to get the amount of sales tax it had gotten prior from those businesses. In this case, this seems quite simple. Are we anticipating a pretty simple arrangement when we would get the contract?
Councilmember Heller, I wouldn't think that the development agreement would be structured like the Crosswinds Development was with the considerations that you've already stated.
Thank you. I didn't think so, but I wanted to ask. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Kaufman? Seeing none, thank you. And we're going to introduce the next question.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to introduce to this body Cody Foster, who is the primary developer. He can provide a little, an overview of his vision and why he's doing this and his commitment to downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here tonight. Sitting through this, I'm not very good at meetings, so it was interesting to see you all sit here for this long. So I'll try and keep it short.
Glad you could join us.
You know, the one thing I would say is it's evident the commitment that all of you have to Topeka. I think that's a commitment that I share. You could say I'm a big supporter of Topeka from starting a business here that now employs over 400 people. We've always made Topeka our home. You know, as we've moved properties over the years and upgraded some of the facilities we've been in, we've never come to the city and asked for help in any of those things. In fact, we've turned funds down because we didn't think they were presented to us in the right way. You know, I'm a big supporter of Topeka, but I'm also a big supporter of where I think Topeka's headed. And I think we have a really bright future. I came here in 1995 and went to go to Washburn, have been here ever since. My wife is a lifelong Topekan. And I've never seen the, kind of the underswell of momentum that's here right now. And it's pretty neat. And some of that's a credit to all you. I think Mr. Lebeder said the same thing that so many of us recognize every year. The city runs better and better from that standpoint. So we announced this project. Obviously, Kansas Avenue has been a big project and a lot of money has gone into trying to redevelop that. When I was first told about what was going on in Kansas Avenue and they asked us to sponsor one of the pocket parks at Advisors Excel, when I asked what the plans were to actually get businesses down there, there was none, quite frankly. There was nobody anybody was talking to, there really wasn't any businesses on the radar. So what I had told Vince Frye is, you know what? I don't think a pocket park's what's needed, but I will make some investments into trying to bring businesses down there. And this was the first major one. So we acquired these buildings in the district that we're talking about. We own all five of the buildings that are in that district. Currently, nothing's in any of those buildings. This is going to be the location for the hotel, which will have about 106 rooms and a restaurant, full-service restaurant there. Also, some great event space from that standpoint. To me, well, being the first person to make a significant investment down here, let me rephrase that, a significant investment that's designed for maybe retail tourism to bring some things down here, obviously Capital Federal and some of them have made significant investments down there. But on a retail space, there is some concern, quite frankly. This Sunday, and actually David Bowd and Kevin O'Shea, who are the operators, managers, and designers for the hotel, that do this for a living all over the world, were in. And we went down there Sunday and not much going on right now. Went down there last night, a little bit more going on, but still not a whole lot. But you have some great businesses down there. And we really see this as a project that can be that accelerator for other things happening down there. But it does come with some risk, quite frankly. One is the amount of the investment we're making. As we've got in and started looking at some of these old buildings, so everyone knows our goal is to rehab two of the biggest buildings there and really keep the historic structure of those. Our budget keeps getting a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. And, you know, at this point, it's an eight-figure investment. It's a combination of debt that will be issued through a bank and it's a combination of equity. A lot of that being pledged by myself. But on top of pledging the equity, I'm also personally guaranteeing all the debt that the bank is going to issue against the project. So it's a big risk. But I think it's one that Topeka's ready for from that standpoint. As we looked at, I think, different ways that we could make sure, let me say this a different way. I think the most important thing for this project is that it's successful. We have a lot of momentum going right now. And I think this is probably the first really major project that's going to happen down there. And its success is critical to the future of downtown. There's some other big things planned that people haven't necessarily gone public with, but I think those accelerate if they see this hotel being successful. We've got an incredible team put together and we're going to give it our best shot to be successful. But as we look at how to make sure that it is a success, the financial picture is a big part of that. When we started looking at what are our different options on how to do this, quite frankly, I'm not familiar with any of these different tax things that are out there. What I told Lucky and Seth as we started working on this is I don't want anything where people that aren't staying at our property are taxed anything additional. I don't want this to be something where money's being diverted from other projects and put into this project. I don't want it, quite frankly, with some of the things that you all have had to deal with over the last few years, a project where the city's on the hook for anything. And what Lucky came back with is, and he said, you know, a community improvement district could do all that. The pay-as-you-play, basically what we're asking for is a 1% sales tax. It would be on top of the current bed taxes and the other taxes that are collected here in the city to fund other projects. But it would be, just to answer a few of the questions, only applied. We didn't ask it to expand out on Kansas Avenue and collect other stuff in. This literally purely applies to the five properties that we currently own that will be the hotel and the restaurant and the event space. To your point, all new, all new businesses that will be down there. I had not actually seen those five kind of steps and they're not up here. I wish I had them again. But, you know, when I looked through those and when it was being outlined kind of what the purpose of these four are for, you know, we absolutely knocked four of them out of the park. One of them, I don't remember which one now, but one of them was maybe not as clear as the other four. But from, you know, the tourism, employment, it's, it's fine. I kind of remember them, so.
Well, I'll let you remember because, you know, it's serious.
Yeah.
Here, here's a copy for you.
I hope I know what I'm doing.
Because that's four and not five.
No, I said four of them we knock out of the park.
Did you knock them all out?
Here we go. So strengthen economic development. And I think it's a pretty easy argument that this property is going to do that. We plan on employing over 100 people as part of the project, not to mention all the construction and work that will go along with building it. Enhancing tourism. Interesting conversation today, David Bowd, who had just opened a brand-new hotel in Asbury Park, New Jersey, was being interviewed by Travel and Leisure when they were here. And they asked him, you know, a common question, why in the world is Topeka where you're going next? So he currently has two properties in Cape Cod. He has one in New York, a shelter island outside of New York in Asbury Park, New Jersey. And their next big project is Topeka. So I think the publicity that we're going to get around to this coming to town definitely does that. Upgrading older real estate, if you've seen those buildings, we actually stepped in a cat Monday, or stepped on a cat when we were walking through them on Monday because they've been, most of them have been abandoned and kind of run down. They're in pretty bad shape. So we are going to rehab those. And promoting sustainability, I wasn't sure what that meant. That was the one that I didn't know for sure. So that's, I guess that's it for the most part. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Well, thank you for coming and addressing and giving us the overview. That's always exciting to hear. And thank you for your commitment and for what you're doing.
Yeah, sure.
Are there questions for Mr. Foster, Councilman Claire?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you for everything you do in this community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I do, too.
If I could add on that, you know, I think you'll hear us say this some, but somewhere along the way, we lost the part where businesses were really kind of the heart and soul of communities. And we've got some great examples here in Topeka. But we also have some companies now that are kind of corporately owned and the people that run them don't even live here. So for us, it's been, you know, an important aspect of it. So I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Cody, one thing we haven't mentioned is the transient guest tax that the hotel will bring in. How many beds does it plan to be? And do you have any idea, you know, what that will generate?
Yeah, I think it should be significant. So, you know, we plan on having about 109? 109, it's been this moving process over the last few months. 109 beds. You know, our first-year occupancy, we're kind of targeting around 65% occupancy, which is pretty standard in this. But something that's not, I don't know how to completely explain this, but we've received numerous calls, already people booking or asking about weddings, like, when are we going to open from that standpoint? And we've already started competing with the Eldridge and the Oriad, which if you look at how we've designed the property, we view those as probably two of our primary competitors from what we want to do from an event space. So, you know, when I talk about maybe the, you know, the economic impact, I think this is going to create a lot of economic impact. I think it's going to give Topeka a property that can go compete with, quite frankly, some of the hotels that have been built in Manhattan that are pretty nice and obviously some of the hotels that are built in Lawrence. So hopefully, we'll generate some additional revenue for the city through that.
Well, and if I may, as a follow-up, I used to run an organization that had conferences in Topeka because of legislative sessions. And there was always a complaint, there's nothing to do downtown. And so most of those conference attendees would go out to Wanamaker Corridor. And I think this is going to help keep them downtown. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Delise.
Cody, let me help you out. Promoting sustainability means that you're going to go ahead and you're going to transform buildings that were derelict in our community and you're giving us structures that are sound, that are going to stay and they're, they're going to outlast
Okay, then we do five of five.
a lot of what we have going on. So you have four out of four.
Thank you.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm curious, is there any chance the restaurants will open before the rest of the project is complete? I'm kind of hungry.
Well, so that's somewhat of a safety issue. So depending upon city approvals, maybe. You know, I do, I do think one of the other things that's worth at least mentioning is we have bought a number of properties downtown. We have announced that at 705 Kansas, we're going to be opening a restaurant there. And that should open sometime next year is the goal. So, you know, I would like spring, but our restaurant partners literally opened a restaurant in Kansas City this weekend. So they're, they're kind of getting themselves from underneath of that and then we'll start on that. So we actually have the drawings up already. 705 Kansas has been gutted, so it's completely gutted, ready to start there. We do have some plans for the building at 735 Kansas that we hope to open next year also. So we would like to get some things going before the hotel starts from that standpoint, for sure. So, and there are some neat things, you know. While Kansas Avenue is not what we want it to be yet, I think, it's comparing it to just a few years ago. And I'm down here every weekend, I'm going through the buildings, checking on them. And there's, you know, 1,000 times more activity than there was a few years ago. Just not Sunday evenings, really, so.
Are you still targeting the spring of 19 for the hotel?
Spring of 18.
18?
Yep, yep.
Wow, that's much more aggressive than I expected.
Yeah, okay.
Fall of 17? Fall of 17?
Yeah, well, that's what I've been pushing for, but contractors tell us that's not possible.
This is, thank you very much. Is this now, are there questions? We're going to have a resolution on the agenda next week where we set the public hearing, I think. Is that...
Yes.
Okay, so that, we'll be getting the process and do all we can. We don't want you to slow you down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, your commitment.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. City Manager.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to embarrass Cody as he walk, as he's walking away. You run into a lot of people and you are not always sure about their motivations. There's never any confusion with Cody. He has been fully committed to this community. And I can't tell you the times that he's called me up. He's made an offer to do something to support the police and the community. And then it happens and I said, well, let's talk about this. And it's like, no. We're not going to talk about it. So we actually snuck into his office a week or two ago and presented him and the, and the other boys an award on behalf of the city. But it was really just the chief and I that got to go. He didn't want anybody else there. So you don't run into that many impressive people who are totally committed to their community. And we're, we're well off having him as part of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Good comment. We have one person signed to speak on this issue, Nick Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So let's roll back the clock a little bit. It's 2015. There was a Starbond proposal similar in some ways in that it sought to invest public money into private enterprise for public benefit. The majority of you rejected that proposal. The Starbond proposal from 2015 had a great return on investment, probably like 200%. This proposal also has a good return on investment, probably lower, let's say 100%. If the Starbond deal was not good enough for your approval, then neither should this proposal. Fair is fair. I'm going to close with a quote from Chris Ewing in 2015. "There's a basic, more philosophical difference about the city getting involved in a private entity like that. The nature of the transaction, in my mind, is a bailout." If you found that statement to be true in 2015, then it is still true today. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. That completes the first discussion item. If you have another discussion on it, counsel, we'll go to the second item. I'm sorry, Councilman Heller, did you wish to...
If I could, because he quoted Chris Ewing, we did all get a letter from Chris supporting this project, just for the record.
Okay, I, I'm not sure, but I'll, okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, discussion? We'll proceed then to the second discussion item.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to just comment. If anybody knows that gentleman, have him call me because I'd like to know what the bailout is. You know, he took out of here so fast, but if anybody knows him, have him give me a call.
All right, thank you. We will. Any other comments, discussion? All right, let's proceed to item B, discussion.
B is discussion regarding the request to annex land to the city of Topeka, Kansas in accordance with KSA 12520 located at 6626 Southwest Huntington Street within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas and adjacent to the city of Topeka Corporate Limits.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Feinder to provide an overview of this project and be available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Feinder.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'll be pretty brief here. Before you, next week, we'll have an ordinance annexing a property at 6626 Southwest Huntington. That is between Eurish and Arbonia, kind of at the bottom of the hill there. As you can see by the map, it is a single-lot parcel, a little less than an acre, has a single-family house on it and is completely surrounded by, by the city. And so what is happening there, the owner is improving it, rehabbing the building, and they want to connect to city water and city sewer. And by, by rule, we, we have to annex them for that, for those purposes. He has, or they have consented to the annexation. And as you also can see, since it is surrounded by the city, all of our five services are in the area already, fire, police, water and sewer, as well as we do maintain the road there. We do, this is, this is a, for us, recommending approvals is a no-brainer. It is a compact and affordable growth of the city and consistent with our, our land use and growth management plan. So if, I'll stop there, see if you have any questions. Otherwise...
Are there questions? Mr. Emerson.
Mr. Feinder, obviously this is a kind of a no-brainer, but I was just curious. We see lots of examples of this where we have a property that's surrounded on all sides by the city. Can you briefly explain why this wasn't annexed when all that other property was?
Councilman Emerson, I can hazard a guess. When we, in the past, and much like this, we would annex property that has, that consents. And so that usually comes when there is a development or there is a plat or there is a request for a water or sewer from the city. Never having that here, this was, this basically was here and we grew around it. If you include this in the annexation, there is another process to go through because they have not, if they have not consented, it's a, it's a 60-day hearing or notice of hearing and you have to do, do a little more. But I think when you see stuff like that, that's because it's, it was not consented in the past. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. A long description, but it's one of those, right?
Yeah, it's one of those.
Whatever, whatever. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to double-check that this will not increase our infrastructure costs for the city.
Councilmember Jensen, it will not increase our infrastructure costs for the city?
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, that completes that discussion item. And we, that completes our non-action items. We will go to announcements, and first is the presentation of next week's agenda. Courtwood Reed.
For next week's agenda, we have one proclamation. We have two presentations for the City of Topeka's Second Quarter Financial Report, and then the Second Quarter Public Works and Utility Report. On the consent agenda, we have a board appointment for the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. We have two appointments for the Board of Plumbing Examiners. We have a resolution relating to the serving of alcohol at First Friday events. We have a resolution authorizing temporary notes for Series 2016A. We have an ordinance and corresponding resolution for general obligation bonds, Series 2016B. A resolution for the Cyrus Hotel CID, studying the public hearing for September 6. We have an annexation ordinance for 6626 Southwest Huntington Street. We have a joint memo, random of agreement for group healthcare benefits for the labor unions, 2017 through 2019. We have a resolution considering the city's property taxation policy, and then the appropriation ordinance adopting the 2017 City of Topeka operating budget. Discussion items include updates on the Dangerous Dog Ordinance and the Merchant Guard Ordinance, and then we have a discussion on the Topeka Fire Department update.
Okay, thank you. Now for announcements, things that, whether we want to inform the public of. Mr. City Manager.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I just wanted to recognize that Monique Laude, who you saw the product of her work this evening, AmeriCorps Southwest Region has named her as the sponsor of the year. So, that's very, very, a great honor for us, and there is, on August 23rd, Tuesday, there's the National Park Service is going to be here, and they're going to be having some meetings specifically to talk about the developments that are happening here, Oregon Trail and other things. So that will be at the Great Overland Station from 9:00 to 5:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, at the Great Overland Station on the 23rd. So that will be an interesting thing to participate in and learn what they're doing. And I just really want to talk about, our commitment to training people continues to develop, and I remember four years ago, it was a fairly constant topic, as to how do we really improve the internal operations, and we continue to look for ways to do that that are practical, and they're still sitting back there. So, Bob Sample and Sylvie Davis, wave your hands, have started a supervisory management course. And there's 20 members of the city staff that are participating in this in 16 weeks, and they work through various topics as to how to become a better manager and to grow within your career. And it's very cool, it's very organic, and it's specifically designed for the organization, and it's one of those areas where we really take advantage of the skills that we have within organizations. I'll just wrap on one thing. Cody made reference to Kansas Avenue isn't what it is today, but it was last weekend, and it was very cool. But there's an energy that exists in Topeka today, and as a city manager, I get really excited about what's happening and the energy, not, it's really the private sector that's in many regards pushing the public sector to catch up with them on a lot of the activities that's occurring, and that doesn't happen in a lot of places. On last Friday, we had the 52nd Police Academy graduation, great-looking class, 12 people that are going to be joining our department and are out in the streets, and that was exciting. The Neighborhood Night Out, they're, you know, mid-70s, number of neighborhoods that put on events, and none of us had enough time to go to all of them, but they really started earlier in the day, and they ran throughout, into the evening. Some of us also had to split time between that and the Harley Party and the Doug Danger Jump, which was really cool. So I think that drew some attention to us. And I think T-PAC is also making a fight to get back into the game. They put on two concerts last week that were just phenomenal. Willie Nelson, unfortunately, on Russell, was not able to participate. And Chicago on Sunday night, for those who went or saw it, it was absolutely phenomenal. I closed my eyes and remembered college. It was awesome. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I want to just mention two similar announcements into the public sector, and that, had the opportunity to participate recently, July the 27th, Futimera, a Japanese company, has purchased the, which we used to call the DuPont Cellophane Plionees of Town, which, you know, generally has been going down. There was a number of attempts to do things with it, primarily because cellophane really isn't used anymore, because it's not, it isn't degradable. This is the largest cellophane-producing company in the world, and they found this plant, because they now make a cellophane that is biodegradable. And on that date, they had their top corporate leaders here from Japan, fantastic opening, which included splitting, breaking a barrel of supposedly sake that they do for celebrations in Japan. And they, it is, they're immediately putting in 28 million, hiring, no, I'm sorry, 35 million, hiring 28 new employees, and they plan to have another production line added to it within a few years. They are that strong, they talk about the private sector in the greater Topeka community and what that's doing. And that was, as the people who work there said, it was just a matter that this plant would be closed, never operate again, and now it's turning around to that extent. And then today also was the opening of the Health Resort, which is a healthcare facility out west on, of the movie theaters, north on West 6th. It's a, they put in $15 million investment, and they are, when they go full running, there'll be 150 employees. So there's another major investment, economic development into the community, and also they're providing a new healthcare service that's a complement to what is already provided in healthcare in Topeka for Northeast Kansas. So, two great examples of private sector companies coming in and making investments and really improving our community. Go to Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Generally, when council members are dispatched on away missions, we're to provide a report to the council, and I just want to thank you all for the support you gave us with the resolution that allowed us to have our wedding reception on Ninth Street. It was an incredible event, and it was the best day of our lives, up to now. So, thank you for that. A lot of wonderful things happening in our community. Summer's on the downslope, I know, kids are going back to school. My condolences, Ms. Clear. I just, I can't imagine getting a summer off and then being forced to go back to work. That would just be tough, but I know you can handle it. Have a safe week, everybody. Thank you much.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you can see, I attended something during the break. It was called the Kay's Garden Dedication, and it was a fabulous event. It was a little warm, but we did just fine. And Brendan did an awesome job of explaining where the garden is going to be built, that the $2.5 million from the state will build. We also need to build a building for the zoo. And so, we got our first contribution from former council member Sam Karkup, and I think he sees the vision that we've got for making this a world-class Asian garden. And so, I want to commend Sam and his wife, Jeanette, I think, Janine, for giving that, and I challenge everybody in Topeka to also feel the vision that's there for the zoo and help us with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, Mayor. I was also there sweating, and it is going to be a beautiful place. I just wanted to thank the Topeka Police for your service, especially during this next round, is he still here, of gun violence that we've had. If you haven't noticed, the gun violence this time is happening west of Gage. So, just wanted to tell them, thanks for keeping us safe, and I'll see you at Cruising the Capitol this weekend, on Saturday.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Very briefly, Seek LaVio was a great success, and the Urban Slide and the Rotary Freedom Festival along with it. Neighborhood Night Out as well, I don't know what people saw in your districts. I had seven to go to in my district. I've been to all those neighborhoods before, but they really grew this year. The number of people that came, and the depth and the richness of what was happening was, again, I've been there before, it was really great. And then, again, Cruising the Capitol this weekend, things keep rolling. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Clear.
Um, planning for October for the Natoma Parade, October 8th, put it on your calendar. See, and get it on, turn your, oh, I'm sorry. You have to repeat it. Okay, plan for October, October 8th. See, now you can't have another conflict, because I'm early. October 8th, Natoma Parade.
What time?
It is at, it is at 11:00. Okay, and I'll give you more information every week. Okay. Harlan Visioning on their website about the events coming up with the National Park Service coming in. We had the announcement, the mayor was there in the end of July, and they're going to come about the Oregon Trail, and they're going to do a charrette, and the open house for that, for the community, is August 22nd, from 6:30 to 7:30. And I will tell you more about that next week also, but get that one on your calendar. Community Action, you know, it's so great to see all these back-to-school agencies doing back-to-school supplies for kiddos, and I helped Community Action stuff backpacks and give those out, and that was so awesome to see. They do so much for poverty, for kiddos in the community. School starts tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Sandra, October is Fire Awareness Month, so you put that whole month, we're going to have a new theme, a new theme. Mr. Emerson, do you have your smoke detector in place?
Yeah.
That's just, I will be checking on that. You know, every week, or not every week, but since Ms. Schwartz has got up here, she talks about the gem of the month, or the week, or whatever, and so I thought, you know what, I'm going to get my own gem this week, so I'm going to copy off of her. I want to personally thank the police chief and the men in blue, I think he's left. They collected school supplies, and they took them to 501, so that kids could not be bullied in school, and that's very crucial. And it was his ideal, but I think it's awesome that our police officers did that for our kids. Also, I'd like to, another gem is the Silverbacks. They're a group that feed, but Saturday, they gave out free haircuts, and they gave out 150 free haircuts down at the Ramada End, and they also gave them a backpack with hygiene products in it, and I think that's very, very huge. It just shows that we, Topeka is a giving, just a giving town, and that's awesome when it comes to the kids. And then August the 12th, which is next Friday, but I want, I'm like Sandra, I want to get it on your calendar, the State of Kansas from 11:00 to 1:00 on the south side of the State House will be giving out school supplies, and I will send everybody this through an email tomorrow. We have a lot of free resources out there, and we have a lot of kids in need and families, and we just need to continue to get the word out. And that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, we had a great turnout also at the National Night Out in District 4, went to, I think, eight or nine different places. Mr. Ledbetter had a fantastic party over for High Crest with a live band and a cookout, and there are just myriad activities to do, and it was great to see everyone, see everyone so engaged. Secondly, I'd like to echo what several of my colleagues said here, and thank Mr. Foster for everything that you're doing for Topeka, and the hundreds of things that you guys at Advisors Excel are doing. So, thank you for your commitments. Lastly, I would, I would like to request that I get a larger name tag next week.
Okay.
And that is it.
All right, going right on. Deputy Mayor Delisa.
On that note, well, I would first like to say thank you to everybody that came onto National Night Out. It was so much fun. I was in three events. It was kind of fun to be at High Crest and have the band having, playing music. I was going to sing with them, but they didn't know how to play Sumetta James, so they missed out on that. It was great to see that they were using horses to try to stuff the bus. I mean, it was, it was interesting. They had the horse next to the bus trying to encourage people to go in. Briarwood also had over 50 people in attendance, and it's just great to see how everybody is just doing their part to make this community a better place for everybody. On a sadder note, I would like to extend again my condolences, and, you know, just my heart goes out to our police unit, and we lost our puppy. And I know that he was a member of the force, but there was so much love around this four-legged officer, and not only for the officer, but also for the handler. For those of you that don't know this, the handler takes the doggy home, they take care of the animal like it's their own, so just my heart goes out to that. Excited about, two exciting things that are happening in our community. I will talk about the community playground build for the Rescue Mission. For those of you who are interested, the Rescue Mission is building an amazing place called the Children's Palace, is going to house over 124 children, and they're going to be able to have education there. It's not a residence, it's just a place for them to have education, top-quality care, and for the parents to learn how to be great parents as well. And the place is already built, but they're building a playground in the background, and they need everybody. I mean, the need is huge. They need 100 people per shift. There's three shifts for five whole days. There's huge needs for coordinators, individuals that are going to be able to work all five days, all day, to help with volunteers, help with food, and help with tools. So, if you know anybody that's retired and has a heart for serving, you don't have to be an expert, just, you know, get in touch with Mark DeGraw over there at the Rescue Mission with Barry and Jessica. It's going to be an amazing thing. I don't think that we've had a build that big that is going to include the whole community for five whole days in a row. And again, I will say, one of the first companies to say that they were going to be there was Advisors Excel. So, that's one of the many companies over there, and I will say shamelessly, Westar is going to be there, too. Another exciting thing in our community is, in our retreat, we talked about diversity in our community. There is a group of over 11 corporations in this community that are talking about diversity and inclusion as a community overall, and there's a lot of talks about how they're trying to develop a toolkit in which they are going to help other businesses in the community address the issue, and how they're going to help raise the stock in our community. Finally, I cannot leave without saying that I really want to invite everybody to go ahead. I'm looking for the link right now, so pardon me if you see me looking at my phone, but the link that I want everybody to go to is topekas ShawneeCountystategy.com. This is extremely important, friends. A few years ago, we were talking about how we could better economic development. We have undergone a significant job of digging deep, listening to what things are working and what things are not working in our community, and we are seeing change happen. But in order for us to make that change happen, we want to have all of your voices. Who do you know that has email access, that has access to a listserv, that could actually go ahead and make sure that this survey gets spread throughout the community? This survey is a follow-up to what we learned from Garner. Garner said there's no strategic planning for economic development. Jado needs to have a mission, needs to have a vision of where they're going to go, and we really want to hear from all of you. One of the things that Mr. Ledbetter was saying earlier today in comments, we really want to hear from our community with regards to economic development. This is your opportunity. There is no special group that is going to get this survey. This is up to you to go ahead and take it. So again, I will look at my phone and say, go to topekas ShawneeCountystategy.com, and in there you will have the link to go ahead and do the survey, and give us information on what things you see happening in our community and how we could better our economic development process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That completes our announcements for this evening. We proceed then to public comment. The first person to speak is Joseph Ledbetter.
Governing body, I just want to embellish that record that was talked about at the High Crest Park. Nellie Hogan and Betty Phillips did the hard work of helping organize it. I was there, but I just want to comment on them and congratulate them in case they're listening. listening. Tonight, I am here representing Deborah Edwards, who is the owner at 419 Southwest Taylor. Deborah's been there 30 years. She's been a client of mine for several years. I've known her a long time, very solid, hard-working lady. She owns also 417 Taylor, and 423 Taylor, and 429 Taylor. Now, I'll give you a little background. Deborah's house is about 123 years old, and I don't have real good pictures of it tonight, but she's invested a large amount of money in this house. So this house could easily sit in potlun. It's, you know, you might think it's a little bit out of character for that neighborhood, but in Deborah's eyes, that is what the neighborhood should look like. And so that's how I'm gonna start. Unfortunately, I didn't have my office help today. I didn't make enough copies. However, we're gonna get by that. I'm still got a lot of copies. The first one I want to put on the record is an email that Deborah sent last year to a number of people in city government. I'll pass the rest of these around. She's complaining about being harassed by city employees writing her up, writing her property up over weeds, which were really flowers, and just couldn't seem to communicate at all with city code enforcement to leave her alone. And she's a very private person. She works, does immaculate work on these properties, and I just, for the life of me, don't understand it myself. So the second thing I'm gonna hand out is the letter notice of violation she got. One for the record, please. And this is a box spring that is propped up next to a trash can, which is appropriate. And that is to be picked up by solid waste people, which she has trash service, and all her tenants have trash service. She makes sure that's all paid. She does that herself. The next thing I'm putting in the record is a copy of the certified mailing that was sent to her. So there was a lot of expense involved by the time you figure up the office and sending it through certified mail, and writing this letter out, telling her what a horrible thing had happened on her property with this box spring being propped up next to the trash container. The next thing I'm gonna put in the record is a copy of the Shawnee County Solid Waste website, which if anybody in code enforcement would have bothered to go to, I pointed this out. I'm gonna read this into the record. It says, "How and when can I arrange for a large item to be moved? Shawnee County Solid Waste offers one large item pickup per week, free of charge. This includes, next, box spring and a mattress." So I'm gonna pass that out. Hopefully, they'll check the website next time. The next picture I'm handing out, I'll put these in the record later, but they're, I'm gonna pass these around. This first picture is, because I didn't have enough of them, the back of Ms. Deborah Edwards' garage. And notice how immaculately painted it is. This is on an alley, so she's very concerned about how her property looks from all angles. The next pictures I want to hand out, I'm gonna ask for an extension. I'm out of time. I want to properly prepare this and make sure that the city understands her complaint.
How much, how much time?
I'd like four minutes. Hopefully, I won't need that.
Okay, Sandra Claire moves to give additional four minutes. Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Proceed.
Thank you. The next pictures I'm gonna hand out are what Ms. Edwards gets to see every day across the street. Now, notice the large dog roaming around, the trash, the litter across the street from her house. The next picture I'm gonna hand out is further views that she took of houses across the street from her house. Okay? More trash. All of this can be seen from the street. She did not walk up into the yard, take pictures. She stood at the street, so these are in plain view. Any code enforcement person would not have been violating anybody's rights to write these houses up. They could have seen it very easily in plain view from the street curb. The next one is same block, what Ms. Edwards sees from her house every day, a different view of a different house. Now, what I want to do, she's gonna come up and speak as well, and her son as well, who lives in one of the other houses next to her. We seem to have a situation in this city where some people, for whatever reason, get focused on, and I don't even know why. It makes no sense. When across the street are glaring examples of trash and debris and rubbish, and one of the houses on her street, down the street on her side, which she didn't take a picture of, she's gonna describe, has holes in the wall that you can actually see into the house, and yet it's being cited by code enforcement, and they're constantly giving it a pass, and it's not being fixed, or it may be in such a state that it's gonna have to be torn down. I have not looked at it personally. She also lives down from, down the street from Sumner School. Drive by that one, and tell me that that's up to code enforcement. So what I see is I go around town, and as I talk to some of my clients, and I want to mention another one, on East Fourth Street, that recently had an alfalfa field mowed down. Alfalfa is a cash crop, and there are pieces of land, in city speak, they're classified as agriculture. I know, because I got that reclassified. And I said, "They did what?" And so they mowed it down. He has not been reimbursed for the hay loss, and he has not been reimbursed for his city attorney, or his attorney fees. What I'm saying is, we take a person like Deborah Edwards, and we focus on her, and I don't know why, and then right across the street, you'll have trash and debris, and at the end of the house, you have a house that's crumbling, brick walls are peeling off of it, and they just stay that way. So, you know, I'm bringing this up because Ms. Edwards asked me to do it. And what I'm hoping will come out of this is that maybe they'll do a better job of policing the people that need policed, and leave the really good homeowners alone. Flowers are not weeds. Alfalfa is a cash crop, not that she was growing that. There are things that are not nuisances, and yet they are written up. And then you turn around, and you have situations like I've seen at High Crest where the situations are just ignored, month after month, year after year. So that ends my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Second person to speak is Deborah Edwards.
Well, here we are again. Same song, third or fourth verse, a little louder, a whole lot worse. In fact, it has become a cacophony of dissonance, featuring an atonal ostinata. I have until now postulated that I am a reasonably intelligent, articulate individual. However, this most recent property maintenance code violation makes it self-evident that I'm too stupid to figure out what the real rules are. Not the ones I've read on the website, but the rules that are in play on a day-to-day basis. The rules that are ambiguous and subject to interpretation by the individual inspector. The rules that made an inspector decide I needed to be cited for a box spring setting by the trash cans regardless of what Shawnee County Solid Waste policy is. A few years ago, thanks to the beneficence of a dearly loved departed uncle, I had a choice to make. At that time, I owned two properties in the 400 block of Southwest Taylor. My choice was to sell both houses, combine the proceeds with my inheritance, and move to what some might consider a better location, or walk my talk and invest even more in my neighborhood. I'm too old to think I can change the world, but too young to give up on my core belief that I can have a positive impact on my immediate surroundings. To that end, I not only spent every penny I inherited, I even borrowed more money to purchase and rehabilitate two more houses on the block. That ownership made me responsible for who would be occupying those dwellings. My goal is not only financial, but to provide adequate, safe housing for honest, working people. I wanted to rid my block of the blight and pestilence that is so often associated with an inner-city address. I want to live on a block that is a safe place for families with children, without the influence of drugs or gangs, and the violence that surrounds illegal activities. I thought I had the support of this governing body. In fact, I have preservation awards proudly hanging on my wall that say I do, juxtaposed to code enforcement violations that say I don't. That somehow my hard work and best efforts, like Belshazzar, have been weighed in the balance and found wanting. If I were to look at my present situation with the objectivity of an outsider, I most likely would tell someone in my position, "You've been cited four times in four years. Go clean up your damned mess, and then study the broken windows theory, until you understand that neatness and orderliness produce personal responsibility and accountability." I thought I had done both. Two years ago, this body passed the International Property Maintenance Code, hoping for enhanced power to clean up our city, to force property owners to be responsible and accountable. From my perspective, nothing has changed. Veterans living on my block are still coming to me, asking how to force their landlord to fix a non-working furnace in January. A house at the south end of the block is literally falling apart with interior walls exposed. At the north end of the block, Sumner still sits in its sad state of deterioration. My initial re-
Would you like some additional time?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, all right. Councilman Hiller moves to extend for two minutes. Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Okay, you proceed.
My initial response to this most recent violation was to assume that it was targeted enforcement and harassment. However, this past weekend, at a National Night Out event, I had the opportunity to visit with a property maintenance inspector, and was surprised to learn that their training consists of a two-week ride-along with a senior inspector. This practice may not be adequate to the job we expect them to do. I have the utmost respect and regard for Mr. Hogan, and I believe he does an exemplary job, given the budgetary restraints and unfunded statutes he is required to work with. I believe that increased funding for better education and training of property maintenance inspectors would have prevented me from needing to address you twice in one year about the same situation. Hey, I'm a team player. Just tell me what the rules are.
Thank you. Sandra, thank you very much for sharing your, for sharing your story with us. We appreciate it. We can work on that.
Any questions?
Are there questions for Ms. Edwards? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Aaron Edwards.
You don't have multimedia, do you? Like a Chromecast or anything? It's all right. My name's Aaron Edwards. I live at 417 Southwest Taylor. I work, my degree is a computer engineer. I finished my PhD last year from California State University. And what I work with is systems. And when you create a system, you have to understand how each decision you make influences other items. The item I'm speaking about tonight is the same mattress and code compliance issues. I didn't have a prepared statement. Sorry, I'm gonna bounce around a little bit. But as a computer, as a, as a computer engineer, systems interact and affect each other. And you have to take into account each system and how it's going to affect the subsequent systems connected to it. With the passage of the new city code, based upon the International Property Maintenance as its template, the goal there was to have a unified code that puts us in line with other cities, with the central goal being economic development, obviously. This way, corporations and others would have a consistent code standards and base that they would be expecting without having to have variation from city to city. On the surface, it sounds like a wonderful thing. However, looking at issues of that, is that we passed the law, this body passed that statute. However, the secondary aspects were not considered. The aspects such as, part of it is that if a house has more than 30% of its value as in need of repair, then the city is able to condemn it and take the property and raise, and at that point, raise it. However, the fundage to accomplish that was not put in place. In theory, the idea is good, but without thinking about each subsequent system and how it interconnects, it is a hollow law, a dog without teeth. And the train, as you've heard about training not being properly delivered to, possibly, I don't, we can't say for sure, but with the selective enforcement is the best way of putting that, where some people will be looked at with a microscope, and others will be completely ignored. It's as if they're invisible. In 1982, an article was written by James Q. Wilson and George Kelling, and that was, and they were social scientists. That was the broken window theory. And you've heard a lot about that. In short, basically, the broken window theory is that if you allow for a house to have a broken window, it will continue, continue to degrade, and that will spread like a cancer through an area. And the only weapon that we have against that is our code enforcement and equal application of code enforcement. If we truly are invested in economic development of this city, then we must look at our code enforcement and having an equitable application of code enforcement in order to grow. The greatest asset any city has is not its roads, it's not its buildings, it's not even its infrastructure. It is the human assets of that city. Now, myself, having a PhD, I have great opportunities, many of them elsewhere, but I have made the choice to stay and make my life in Topeka.
Your time is up. Do you need additional time?
Yes, please.
Talk to me how much.
Four minutes.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz moves to provide four minutes. Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Please proceed. Four minutes.
So I have, I have opportunities to, you know, to move if I wanted, but I have made the choice to stay in Topeka, and I am my mother's son. I planted my flag forth and tailer, not, you know, there is no zip code envy, but what we are trying to build, and what we are trying to accomplish, you know, it is great to receive the accolades for the awards for historic preservation, but at the same time, when we see crime rampant, when we see blight, neglect, ignored, when we, we see a complete asymmetrical enforcement, it is very frustrating, it is very difficult. And I believe that in order for the city of Topeka to grow, we have to focus on the most important asset we have, which is our human assets. We need to improve the quality of life, and that's going to mean coming down on landlords. There are a tremendous amount of slum lords in this city. I had- I had some data from city data, some maps showing property values and such. The data is slightly, is slightly old. Last census data is from 2013, from the culmination of that. But property values and change since 2000, you can see that many areas of Topeka have had a very flat property value. There are a few areas which have grown, but we have not kept up with the national average. We have not experienced the growth that a city the size of Topeka should. And we have to ask why. We look at businesses. We look at roads. We look at all of these things. But the real answer is, people don't want to live in filth. They don't want to look out their door and see trash piles and three-foot-high grass. And when we can't bring professionals to our city, when we can't, when, when we have people come through and businesses are looking at locating to Topeka, and they drive Topeka, I mean, it's nice to, you know, we can keep them in our bubble, and, you know, we can have with our economic development, our Chamber of Commerce, show them the best. We show them the Wantamaker Corridor. But those people do go and look at the rest of town, too, on their own, and they don't like what they see. And that's probably why you don't hear back from so many businesses, is when they go and they drive by Fourth and Taylor, that they drive through these other areas, they drive by Highcrest, and they see what Topeka really is. Not the best of Topeka, but they see the worst of it. And they don't want, they know they can't bring professionals. They can't bring young, active people. And we need to redouble our efforts on code enforcement in order to encourage economic development. I believe that that's, would benefit us most. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for sharing with us.
Sorry, it was a little bouncy there.
I'm sorry, Mr. -- okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. The next person to speak is, I'm sorry.
I'm going to, again, on behalf of the city, apologize to Deborah Edwards. And I know what kind of, I understand, but I just can't sit here and not say nothing. So I'm going to apologize again. City manager, when we passed that, what is it, UPOC or whatever, when we passed that, one of the key things that we stressed was we were going to work with people to make them understand their violation and to work with them to make sure. I've seen worse violations than this myself, and this hurts, just to look at this, you know, because we have a free dumpster. There's people that would have came and got it for her, Ms. Edwards. And I, I understand that, but it just baffles me that we couldn't say, you know, Deborah, and, and we know her, that we couldn't say, Deborah, you know, this is in violation, and can you help us get it cleaned up? And that, that just really hurts. That really hurts when I see--
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. You'll have to just--
When I, when I, when I see that. So, but that's the key thing that we stressed when we, when we voted for that. And this is not the only instance. I think I've got another one in my district with weeds and flowers, you know, that again, that she's been targeted, or she feels like she's been targeted. So I hope that we could, we could look at that. I hope that we could look at a way, I've said this to you before, and I'll say it again, that we could, did you know, and start putting some of these violations out so people will understand and know how to get help and what we're expecting out of them. Because a lot of things have changed. A lot of things have changed. And, and there's things that used to be codes that are not anymore. So we've got to do a better job at educating, I'm going to use that word again, our people, but also working, working with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Ted Meis. Pardon?
Honorable mayor, city manager, and councilperson. I come before you tonight to inform you that I have been given my life back. A week before, last Wednesday, I was taken to the special heart care operating room of Stormont Vale Hospital and given a new heart valve. I do not know whether you know that a group of dedicated doctors have formed a group, along with the hospital, to give Topeka cutting-edge heart care. We are fortunate to have this kind of care in Topeka, and I can't say enough about their professional care organizational ability. Not only will this heart care be good for Topeka, but will also draw people from northeast Kansas to Topeka for this type of heart care. And this will also give me a little bit of time more to serve the public. And as a today 85-year-old man, I painted 10 fire hydrants in Topeka, and I have uptown all ready for development as far as my fire hydrants is concerned. So you all have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
Because I am sure having a wonderful--
That completes our public comment for this evening. We do have one executive session. If the deputy city attorney would provide the parameters for us, please.
All right. It would be a motion to recess and do executive session for 20 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relative to health care. The staff necessary for discussion would be Jackie Russell, Brandon Kaufman, Nikki Lee, Catherine Walter, city manager Colson, and deputy city manager Doug Gerber and myself.
Okay. Is there a motion to proceed? Cohen moves to go into executive session, and Councilman Ortiz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes.
Eight, having voted yes. We will go into executive session when the room is clear.